I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectment for Monday, January 6th to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 Thank you.
Town Administrator Kate Bush sends her apologies. She's not feeling well this evening, so we'll wish her speedy recovery. Okay, we have some guests this evening from the Darien Historical Society who would like to make a presentation to us. We were provided with your memo about your exciting plans to become a museum. So with that, if you would please come to the podium and introduce yourself.
Thank you. And we have a little packet that we'll pass out as well. So, good evening. I'm Bob Pascal. I'm President of the Darien Historical Society, and I've actually lived in town for more than thirty-five years. With me, passing out the packets, our Executive Director Maggie McIntyre, and in the audience is Joe Spain, one of our Vice Presidents. And in your packets are two letters of support, one from the society historian Ken Reese, author of The Story of Darien. He's also rapidly completing a book in honor of the bicentennial. And then Marion Castell, the town historian. She's also asked that I read her letter into the minutes, so I'll do that in a moment. So, first off, we just wanted to thank you all so much for the town's past generosity to the organization, and also thank you for your consideration for this evening's request. Let me start by giving a little background. Hopefully you've all had an opportunity to visit, but background on the organization. We were founded in 1953. Our mission is really to collect, preserve, and exhibit local artifacts, and in so doing really educate and celebrate the story of Darien to the community. On our campus, we support, maintain, and operate a house museum. It's an 18th-century salt box. An education center, library, archives, and actually our main gallery space is a 19th-century barn that was actually moved onto the property to match the homestead. I'm sure you've all seen the red salt box. It looks like a sleepy colonial farmhouse, but it's busy. So just in this last year alone, we had five major exhibits. We hosted twelve of our fellow nonprofits having meetings in town, seventeen curator tours. We hosted twenty academic lectures. We gave two-hundred-and-sixty private tours. We educated over seven-hundred students in visits to the society, and over three-thousand people visited the campus last year. But I'll draw your attention, and I'm on Slide Six, if you're following along in your packet, in that bottom right. We also had a thousand staff hours in responding to research requests. So let me tell you a little bit about that. You know, what did that entail? What did it look like? Well, pretty much anything and everything. So those, a thousand staff hours, to put it into context, about twenty hours a week, that's thirty thousand dollars a year, and about a third of our staff labor budget. It goes against these research requests. You had a few examples in the packet we sent ahead, but on the screen and in your slide, I just gave you three kind of pull quotes, just to show you the variability. One was someone found in a tag sale, a bottle, I think from the 19th century with a little pharmacy. They wanted to help do research, a gift for someone. You can see some genealogy, actually a family, the Mather family, wanted to do a little tracking back. And then we do get a fair amount of real estate. In this case, it was a home that they were looking to preserve back to more of its original look. So let's put into context. So we currently receive ten thousand dollars from the town, really around supporting the storing of our archives and our, and our library. That's all the storage media. We have two archive vaults. They're double-door, temperature, humidity, and fireproof, and it also supports opening hours. So again, thank you so much. If you take a look, this is just one wall on the left of this image of the two archive rooms, and really we store everything from voter records, phone books, directory of the town before there were even phones, school yearbooks. So those are, I think, valuable from certainly a history point, but then we have actual really, really unique pieces. We have a series of letters to and from Middlesex Parish during the Revolution. We have a contemporaneous poem that was written around the Mather raid on a scrap of wallpaper. So you can think about that as kind of our own Star Spangled Banner or Paul Revere's Ride. We have a original copy of Thomas Paine's Common Sense, and on the image, on your document there, we have a original copy of minutes from the First Continental Congress, just to give you a flavor of what we're storing. So what we're requesting now is really to move beyond storage and really provide much better access to these valuable pieces. And so we're requesting an increase of forty thousand dollars to a fifty thousand dollar support from the town. What would that allow us to do? First, it would allow us to have a part-time librarian and archivist, not only to respond to these research requests, but also to really help us audit and organize what we have. You see those two vaults. A lot of what's in there is actually in the heads of some of our senior volunteers. So from a succession planning perspective, it's very important that we kind of really build a database of what we have there. Along those lines, we want to digitize these documents so that they're protected. We'll also digitize the physical pieces in our archives and our collection, and we'll provide an online database. On the next slide, we provide the breakdowns. Thirty-one thousand dollars would be for the labor costs of that librarian/archivist. Sixteen thousand dollars would be to upgrade our systems, to think about it. It's not a scanner, but think about scanning the system. It's an overhead digital camera gantry, in essence. And then the curating system itself, which is a product called Past Perfect. Think about that. It's like a card catalog for, for museums. To give you just a comparison of town grants on the following bar chart, you'll see that Norwalk provides, the Norwalk Historical Society, eighty-four thousand dollars in support. Fairfield, fifty thousand. You'll notice that New Canaan and Westport do not provide support, but each of those two towns do request anywhere from thirty to forty dollars an hour for research assistance. And we would like to avoid that and continue to really be a community resource and function as an open resource, research library resource for, for the community. I'll end, just give you a few of the upcoming pieces of excitement. We are rebranding ourselves, the Museum of Darien, to really better capture our community role. We did receive a grant that we're upgrading the visitor experience, both in terms of lighting and signage. We are honored to be playing a role in helping to mark the bicentennial. We are, let's see, how would I say this? We have saved the Whale Boat Middlesex from destruction. We have renovated that, and we'll be bringing that back to town. And we've also received a grant from the state to place an art installation honoring the Whale Boat Men of Middlesex Parish. With that, I would like to read into the minutes a letter from town historian Marion Castell, and then can open it up for questions.
(applause) "Darien's awareness of our past bring us together with pride, a sense of community, and belonging to something greater than oneself. These elements develop in all of us, a sense of humility, sense of self, and of our place, all of which provide the factors that make us such a special, unique town. Our individuality stems from millions of past decisions from every aspect of Darien today. Sensitivity to what past and future history creates become the pillars upon which a strong community rests and will hold together for the future. Darien's future depends upon an informed, responsible public that understands where we have been, where we are now, and where we are going. The majority of Darien's history resides in the records, files, and books that are located in only one town building, and that is the society's Museum of Darien. Bringing technology to fresh historical interpretations, as well as the additional outreach of this material, expands both the financial responsibility and increases the value of preservation, collection, and interpretation of these past, present, and future records. We should utilize all-new interpretive tools with historical records in order to keep a historically-aware community in place to guide our future. Marion Castell, Darien Town Historian, January 4th, 2020." Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Wonderful, very exciting, and how appropriate to be doing all of this in our bicentennial year.
Thank you.
Yep. Just for a moment, I want to digress, and I want to publicly thank Maggie for all of her tremendous work on the bicentennial celebration, which we will be enjoying the opening ceremony for that this Friday evening. So for anyone who's listening, please join us Friday evening here. Is it six o'clock, Maggie?
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Second o'clock.
Perfect. So it'll be an exciting evening. But with that, I'd like to open it up to questions from my board. Krista, Bob, can you talk a little bit about your operating, your annual operating budget?
Yes, it's anywhere between like a hundred-and-eighty-five and two-hundred thousand in the recent years. We're, let's see, we're forecasting this year a hundred-and-ninety-three thousand.
Okay.
Sarah. And then the additional grants that you've received from, I think the state, you said? About the Whale Boat and the other one. Are those significant grants? Are they smaller ones to do those pieces, or?
Yeah, they're very, very specific projects. So one was from a foundation, Horizon Foundation, and that was thirteen thousand. Seventeen thousand for the, for reinterpreting the visitor experience. And then the state of Connecticut was very specific. It was a grant that blends history, art, and was a tourism, and that, the final was what?
Sixty.
Sixty thousand, I think, for, for that. And that...
And the Darien Foundation.
And the Darien Foundation generously provided us a grant to underwrite the salvaging of the Whale Boat, as well as to help us with some internal construction work that we needed to do.
If you become officially a museum, I don't know if that's a special legal designation, and if so, does that allow you to leverage other potential grant funding sources than you would have available to you today?
I don't have the answer.
I don't think so.
I don't think it's a...
We're following the lead of some other local historical societies that are changing their names, but, and we probably will look into getting ALA certification for a museum, but it's not legally necessary to do that. But it's more of a reflection of our mission and who we are, more inclusive.
What is ALA?
Oh, well, oh, the American, excuse me, I used to work for libraries, American Library Association, I meant the AMA, American Museum Association.
Okay. So you're thinking that you might pursue American Museum Association designation?
Yes.
Okay. The portion of this funding that would go to digitizing documents, we've just undertaken a number of years of digitizing documents here in Town Hall, and we contracted out for that service. We didn't buy all the equipment. We just, we did it and got it done, and then as we aggregate more documents for digitization, we would bring that vendor in again to do that work. Is that something that you've looked at?
A lot of the materials that we have, the, the curators prefer that we don't take it out of house, so we, we had not explored a digitization service that would come on site.
Okay. It might be something that you want to look at so that you don't have to potentially unnecessarily invest in, you know, make that capital investment, but technology changes over time, so something to consider. Can you tell me what today is the role of the Darien Historical Society in helping to deliver curriculum to our public school students or private school students?
Sure. Maggie, you want to come up?
Yeah, sure. So our, under the leadership of our education volunteer, Sarah Lexo Kena, and her amazing team of education volunteers, we host all of the town's third graders for a, almost a half-day curriculum field trip, where they learn about maps and about our town history, and they have a tour of the Bates Schofield Homestead. And then, and actually, we've been told a lot of times by parents, actually, somebody just today stopped into the Historical Society and said that their son was just so over the moon about his experience of, for that field trip. It was his favorite thing that he had done in all of his elementary school up until third grade. But it's just, it has such an impact on, on our young people. And then in fifth grade, our education volunteers take the fifth graders for a bus tour to historical sites in town. And then we also have a high school docent program that is actually expanding now with middle school students as well.
And what about the prize? The history prize?
Oh, yes. And we just, we just instituted a new prize for a junior in high school, the Thaddeus Bell Award, for a junior that has demonstrated resilience and enthusiasm, just as Thaddeus Bell did when he was petitioning for our town's independence.
So the high school, or the fifth grade bus tour, is that built into the school curriculum? Do all fifth grade students go on this bus tour?
So there was, this, there was an incident, I guess, where some of the fifth graders recently, last, last year, started going to the Fairfield Museum, and we've been working really hard to build back that program. Not all of them did, and I think we've got, I'm not, I can't say for sure, but...
I believe it's two.
Oh. Two, two or not?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So we're still working to get that back, because it's a really important day for the kids to, and they love it, going around our town. We think that that's important, that our youth understand and celebrate the history of their hometown.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
Do you receive any funding from CDSP? Have you approached or spoken with them? Council of Darien School Parents, they fund other organizations in town.
Oh.
Music for Youth.
Okay. No, I, I don't know.
I don't believe we've approached them.
But we will. Okay. And can you tell me what your collaboration, if any, is with the Mather Homestead?
So we just, this, just this, during the bicentennial year, we are co-hosting a Heritage Day. We have two members of the Mather Homestead are on the board of the 2020 Bicentennial Committee, and it's been really great working with them. Myself and Lauren Swenson, the Executive Director at the Mather Homestead, have had several meetings and discussing maybe future collaboration, even beyond that. But we're hoping actually that Heritage Day becomes an annual event for both of our organizations.
Okay. Other board questions?
I'm just curious as to what are your funding sources? What are your significant funding sources?
Sure. Yeah, I can walk through that. So primarily from individual contributions. So as I'm looking at it, other than the Arts Grant, the Horizon Grant, the town donation, the Darien Community Fund, all would have come from private donations.
Okay. I represent the largest share.
By far.
By far.
Could you put a percentage on the private donations, you know, against the aggregate, roughly?
What do you think, Joe? Eighty-five percent? Ninety percent?
I'd say at least eighty.
Yeah.
Okay.
If I could do math in my head better, I'm looking at the sheet.
No problem. No problem. Other board questions?
And then still on the grants, the Horizon, the Darien Foundation, do you expect to be able to apply back to them, or is that specific? Well, it sounded like the foundation grant was specific to the boat, but...
No, they're very, they're typically, the grants are written for a specific function, so, so no, those will not be able to go against the, the research archive.
But with the designation with AMA, do you expect that will open up other avenues, or that's not really germane to the discussion?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think that people understand that, or when we apply for grants, that the society is in fact a museum.
Okay, right. I understand, okay.
May I ask, is there any other significant change that occurs when you change from the Darien Historical Society to the Museum of Darien? Is there any other, I mean, does it affect you legally? Does it, I mean, does it, what else change? Does nothing? No.
No, it's, it's more akin, and Joe, again, is a lawyer, so, but it's more akin to like a DBA.
Okay. Last question from me. What is your relationship with the Darien Public Library?
We've, we have co-sponsored a couple of programs with the Darien Library, and also the children's librarians have been working with Sarah Lexo Kena to bring some children's programs. We do spooky stories on our front lawn, and also one with the Darien Library, I think, around Valentine's Day. We have co-sponsored some programs. They, the Darien Library was interested in a, a program that we had with a, the curator from the Smithsonian visited, and we were able to co-sponsor with them. But we don't charge, the Darien Library doesn't charge for their programs, so we, we have sort of pick and choose which we co-sponsor with them.
And all of our library books are available in the Dewey Decimal lookup system in the library.
Right.
So if you were looking for a specific historic book in the library, you'd be sent to our library.
Okay. Krista.
I just want to say to thank you for your institution, all the research. My daughter did take advantage of it when she was writing her essay for the Daughters of the American Revolutionary Essay Contest in fifth grade, and we were directed to your library, and it was invaluable.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. So increasing the town's grant to the Museum of Darien will do the specific things that you've outlined here. What is your ultimate goal? Are you looking to build an endowment? Are you looking to, you know, change your board structure in any way to bring in large donors? You know, it seems like there would, might be some opportunities in that regard.
Yes, to both. So we have a, let's see, it's not strictly called an endowment, but it operates like a dam. It's called a board-directed fund, so we have begun building that over the last few years. We have just, this past year, increased the size of our board in our kind of bylaws so that we can be more representative of the town, and, you know, of course, including folks that would have the interest and the ability to support, not only with time, but financially.
Do you have a goal in relation to your board-directed fund, how, where you would like to grow that to?
We don't have a public, a public stated goal at this time, no.
Okay. Okay. Well, I think you know that it's the beginning, very just the beginning today. We began our budget process, meeting with department heads, so your, your increase has been noted, and we will be discussing and deliberating that as we move through our budget process. We thank you very much for coming tonight and presenting the opportunity.
Brilliant. Thank all of you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is this your little TV?
Yes.
Okay. We'll give you a moment to, to take that with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening. Thanks, Joe. Okay, moving on, we have Director of Public Works, Ed Gentile, here to give us a presentation on Federal Realty's Proposed Earth Retention License Agreement. I have to say that you learn new things every day, and this one is a new one.
Start of the basics. Yeah. A couple of times.
I'm still waiting to learn what a soil nail is.
Yes. Yeah, exactly.
A big piece of iron.
It's really long.
Just give me one second. Sorry.
All right, good. You've got visuals. Yes.
Excellent.
You do the overview first, and then we'll...
Oh, my Lord.
Get into those specifics. And we'll try to keep it simple and brief at the same time. Ed Gentile, Director of Public Works, the town of Darien. Thank you very much for having me tonight on short notice. I know you don't realize that, but I jumped on your agenda last minute. I'll just give you a brief history. Federal Realty's project in the Heights will require them to excavate very closely to their property line, if not up against their property line, to build their building, their foundations, their walls, the underground parking garage. So what they're going to need to do is provide support along their property line, which is this heavy black line right here, which starts the red hatching area, and they're going to dig straight down, approximately fifteen to twenty feet in some areas, six to seven feet in others. Really depends on the topography and what's being built there. And I don't, I don't want to get into their plans, but I'll give you a kind of a brief overview. The underground parking garage is in this area right here. This will be the new Walgreens here, and another parking garage over here. So there, there's going to be significant construction along this property line, or the right-of-way line, if you will, for West Avenue, which the town owns.
Thank you, Cece.
So what they've asked us to do, and, and the type of, let's say, sheeting, if you will, to do this type of excavation, they're going to use sawnails. And these sawnails are going to hold up concrete along an earth embankment. So I want you to imagine digging down, down ten, fifteen feet, excavating out, and then running long metal, let's see...
Rods?
Rods.
Would you say?
Thank you. So this is, imagine digging down here, and to support this soil so it does not fall into the, into the area where they're going to be doing their foundation work over here, they're going to actually drive these rods into the ground like this underneath our right-of-way. So our right-of-way line is here, West Avenue was over here. So imagine I cut, I just cut a line right through, right through West Avenue in our project. So building here, West Avenue here, and we're looking towards Stanford. Okay? What they did is they highlighted some of the underground utilities. I will tell you that our utilities are located even further away. The cemetery sewer line is over here. We do not have any storm drainage that they're not going to actually build. They're actually going to rebuild a lot of our storm drainings along West Avenue. So there's going to be significant construction along this property line or the right-of-way line, if you will, for West Avenue, which the town owns. So what they've asked us to do and the type of, let's say, sheeting, if you will, to do this type of excavation, they're going to use soil nails. And these soil nails are going to hold up concrete along an earth embankment. So I want you to imagine digging down about ten, fifteen feet, excavating out, and then running long metal, let's say.
Rods, would you say?
Rods, thank you. So this is, imagine digging down here and to support this soil so it does not fall into the, into the area where they're going to be doing their foundation work over here, they're going to actually drive these rods into the ground like this underneath our right-of-way. So our right-of-way line is here, West Avenue was over here. So imagine I cut, I just cut a line right through, right through West Avenue in our project. So building here, West Avenue here, and we're looking towards Stanford, okay? What they did is they highlighted some of the underground utilities. I will tell you that our utilities are located even further away. The cemetery sewer line is over here. We do not have any storm drainage that they're not going to actually build. They're actually going to rebuild a lot of our storm drainings along West Avenue. So as of right now, where they're going to penetrate below the right-of-way, in some areas, they're seven feet, some areas almost fifteen, and it goes even deeper as they dig deeper, they need permission to work under our right-of-way. Now, there's a couple of ways to do that. You can give them an easement. That's not recommended. We did speak to our attorney. We, I've met with, I spoke with Wayne Fox and Patty Gow from our town attorney's office and we spoke about easements and we talked about licensing agreements. The licensing agreements seem to be more appropriate for what we, our needs are here and it could be more specific than an easement could be. This licensing agreement will end after a certain amount of time, sorry, as shown in item number one, we did put a timeframe on it. I did fill in the blanks after speaking with Federal. They are looking for December 31st, 2021 as a deadline for this license agreement.
So, just so I'm clear, the license agreement gives them the ability to do the work and put those soil nails in place?
Correct.
But the license expires once the work is completed?
That's correct.
Even though the nails stay in place?
Stay in place. And there's items in that I asked to have put in the agreement that says, if I have to come out here and do some work and I come across those soil nails, they will be required to remove them. I give them a certain amount of time to do that and if not, I will have them removed and I will charge them back for my time. Understand, these rods are about an inch and a quarter in diameter, but they're covered with four, let's say, four inches of concrete around them. It's actually, they drill a long hole all the way in here and pull the drill out. They slide the rod in and then they grout the hole inside of that hole that they've made. And at the end over here, it's actually threaded for a bolt to go on top of. So they put a wire mesh and then they put a flat plate and then they put the bolt on and now they've screwed the mesh to the ground, basically on a slope. They have it now in place and then they come with this, they call it a spray, if you will, it's called shotcrete, and they shoot liquid concrete or slurry mix onto this wall and it hardens. And that's the retaining structure that you have when it's all done. They can be removed to a certain point on their property because it's on their property right now. They can remove a portion of it if they have to or they can backfill right up against it. You don't have to remove it when you're done. As for the soil nails, they're spaced out every five, 10, 15 feet, really depends on the depth at which you excavate. So what we've come up with is, I think, an opportunity, if I need to have them removed, Federal will remove them for us. The chances of me having to do work in this area at this depth is very, very slim. All my utilities, like I said, are on the other side of the street. Our storm drainage will be reconstructed and meet all new standards for our storm drainage manual that the P&amp;Z has instituted back in 2003. So basically, all the work along that property line that they've asked permission to go under a right-of-way, all of our utilities will be upgraded or out of the way.
Perfect. So it's really just to get that structural wall in place? They're not really needed after the fact?
Right, that's correct. It adds extra, it adds extra retention capabilities later on, but it doesn't, it's not necessary. It's not necessary. You're going to have footings and foundation walls retaining that, so you don't actually need these here in place.
Sarah?
So I'm very new to this process, so please understand I really don't have a lot of experience, but I have a question. What if these nails, these rods go in during construction? There's a lot of either work maybe done on West Avenue or traffic or whatever. What if these rods shift? What if there's water, table that rises? What if they hit the gas line that's there? What, is this a common thing that these rods are moved or no?
They are, it's not common that they move.
Okay.
Okay, it's like trying to drilling a well at your house.
Got it.
Right, except these are on an angle or not straight up and down. They are filled with a slurry mix of concrete, a figure of four-inch diameter hole with an inch diameter rod going through the whole thing. That thing is encased. The chances of them moving, as I said, they don't, they don't move. That's the whole idea of this whole system is that they don't move. They're basically retaining earth so that you can do work to build foundations and footings in a deep excavation.
Can you talk to us about the liability? Is there a shift of liability to Federal Realty while they're doing this work, installing these rods onto town right-of-way property?
They have, they own all the liability for any of the work that they're doing here.
Okay.
Drilling those rods and putting them in place, excavating along our right-of-way, absolutely. This is a, an approved engineered system. There's different types of systems you can use. There's sheath piling you can drive, it's metal sheeting that you drive into the ground. There's wood sheath piling, you can do metal piles with sheet timber between it. So their liability is, they're actually picking a system that they think the liability is minimal and I'm going to say there's probably a cost advantage to doing this type of retention system.
And quieter.
It definitely is quieter.
If they had to be pounding, if they'd be pounding those things straight down in the ground, which you often see in New York City.
Yeah.
There'd be rackets going on for weeks.
So Ed, the one thing that I don't think I see in this license agreement, and I don't know if it's not customary for a license agreement, is a performance bond requirement of any kind. Is that something that you would recommend?
That's a good question. I didn't think we needed anything with regards to a performance bond. We do have insurance, an insurance certificate that is required to do this work. It's, there's a million dollars of occurrence, per occurrence coverage, plus a $2 million aggregate to cover any damage that they would, could possibly do out there. But that's not something I can't ask Wayne to see if that's appropriate.
Would you mind asking?
Absolutely.
Krista?
I'm sorry, could you take a step back, though, and explain what would happen if we said no? Like, I understand the concept and I understand the need for it, I do.
Sure.
But if we said, no, you've got to work with your, just talk, why are they coming to ask for this? Because what does this do to their project?
Well, the system is driving the request. The retaining, the retaining system that they're asking for is driving the request to come onto our property, basically, and assisting, the engineering system that they're putting in place, supporting it. So, and like I spoke of prior, not more than a minute ago, there's other systems that they can use. They are, some of them are a little bit more costly, some of them are loud. Some of them require that you drive things, this is 750 feet, you drive sheath pilings that are three feet wide and you cover the entire, the entire property line. So this is the, this is the system they had asked for permission to use.
I'm sorry, so to clarify, that this system, that they could do it exclusively, achieve the same goal of holding up the wall exclusively on their own property, but would be either one, more expensive, defederated, or two, would be noise?
Very noisy.
Very noisy. Okay, so those are the two reasons?
The two that I can think of right now, that would be the driving force behind it, is looking at this type of system.
They could achieve it if we ask them to stand their own property? I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, you could. You'd have pile drivers going on for a couple of weeks and the noise would be bang, bang. You've seen pile drivers, right?
No.
In New York City?
You've never seen a pile driver?
No. Okay, I take that back. I highly have seen one, but I just didn't understand that's what it was doing.
It shoots up a great big weight, comes down, bang, up, down, up, down, and keep driving the metal down.
Okay, and they would achieve that on their own? They would stay within their side of the property? Okay. I just wanted, just to get understanding, why are we doing this? So that's a good benefit.
No, there, I mean, if you're asking, is there some type of concession or sacrifice the town is making? I think we're allowing to use an area of our property to do work on theirs, but to no detriment of the town being able to ever use that property again. We always have the ability to go back and use that property. We're not losing anything.
But that would be awfully difficult to remove one of those. Let's say there's a building up against this retaining wall and you need to remove one of those soil nails, so that would be difficult, correct?
No.
No?
No, as a matter of fact, once it's backfilled in all of these foundations, these shaded areas, these are basically foundations for structures that are up two stories high.
Right.
Once everything is backfilled again, these provide no value.
They could be cut.
They can be cut off and, and you think about it, you'd expose a pipe in the ground, it's concrete, they'd hammer it away and then they'd actually go in with torches and just cut it out of the way.
Right.
So a couple of questions. Are we positive that there's nothing else that could possibly be touched? I mean, are we positive?
Underground?
Yes, that there's nothing else underground? Is there, I mean.
EverSource is not in there anywhere?
Yeah, right.
Gas line.
Well, the gas line, and then we positive about the depth of the gas line at every single point along that?
We had that gas line as built, or located, if you will, as they were installing in the ground. We specifically had to go deeper in one section where the storm drainage is being replaced, quite deep, almost nine feet. That area has been identified and soil nails have been removed from that area.
Okay.
Or designed specifically to not go anywhere near where the gas line is. So there, I think they are specifically staying as deep as they are to stay away from any unknowns. Underground electric, underground gas, I don't want to speak for EverSource, but I believe that the gas line has been marked out and identified properly. I don't know of any underground electric that's there, nor have they identified any.
Do you represent Aquarian or EverSource or Gas to come in and to watch the progress of the build, if there's any issues or not?
That would not be something that I would take a lead on.
Okay, I just was curious.
No, but what they'll have before they start this is a utility coordination meeting and it's one of those, okay, folks, this is your last chance. Tell us now, have you been out there? Do you know where, you want us to do test holes? They'll identify, then they've done a couple already, identifying the depths of these utilities.
So can you help me, how far into the roadway or under the roadway do those soil nails go?
Well, on a common depth, let's say they're, they're down, uh, ten, fifteen, they're down about fifteen, twenty feet. These things are going in here about twenty to 25 feet long.
So do you think it goes to the northern side of the roadway?
No. No, we, our licensee agreement only allows them to go about 25 feet to the sound line.
All right.
Can you talk about how it's going to impact any use of that area by Darien residents when they're putting in these nails?
Um.
The road be closed. Right, closed, sidewalks closed, I mean, obviously they're going to be securing their structure, we're talking about that, so what's going to happen to our property?
There'll be a drill rig set up here.
Okay.
Set up on an angle and they'll be drilling into the ground.
Right.
You won't know that by standing up on it, other than a little, some vibration in the ground.
So.
But my recommendation's going to be that they shut down the lane while they do it or monitor the traffic while they're drilling it. Um, you know, I'd rather be a little bit cautious than carefree.
And how long would this take, do they expect to put those in?
You know, I don't know how long it's going to take, but something at this, this night, I'm thinking, because they're going to be doing it in phases, a section of this may, it may take them a couple of weeks to set up and put in place, a month to get portions of, I haven't shown you this picture.
I mean, how disruptive is this going to be to life in that area? That's what I'm trying to go.
Well, I think that they're trying to avoid that. I think that's the part where the sound, the noise, the hammering, this process, other than hearing the excavation, it shouldn't disrupt any part of traffic. They do have some major storm drainage work to do in here. That's going to be phased in. We're trying to get it set up to do during the summertime when the residents here are few. And right now, we're just hung up on another piece on Heights Road right now that can't get us to where we want to be, so we're trying to push that forward. But we are shooting to minimize the impact on West Avenue because it is a major thoroughfare east and west.
Right. So how many total soil nails are being installed?
Jamie, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't answer that one.
Okay.
I didn't ask that question, though I wanted to.
More than the three that we saw in your picture, I guess.
Yeah, what I showed you is basically this cross-section right here. It's us just cutting straight down. You know, they gave me five of them across there to show me different depths and different heights. I gave you probably the deepest one so that you could see just how deep there or how long they were going to go. That was probably the most magnitude of the disruption.
So you shut down one lane of West Avenue for about a month?
No. I, I.
I thought you said we would shut down the lane. You just said we shut down the lane.
I don't have to shut down. I don't have to. I said I'm going to talk to them about shutting down a lane while they're doing this.
Okay.
And see how it's going. If it doesn't have an impact on it, I'll keep the lanes open.
Okay.
Absolutely.
That should be, hopefully that should be the goal, if the lane can stay open.
Absolutely, absolutely. But I understand, I've done work up on West Avenue, I just did sidewalk work up there. The impact to traffic, as long as you keep it moving and alternating, it seems to flow pretty well between nine and three.
Yeah.
Once you get that school and schools involved, then it's something you have to be concerned about. But it will definitely be something I'll monitor and definitely something I want to talk to them about.
I can't see any particular way this would be a risk to the town, but is there a potential for complication from groundwater levels when they do these holes? Because you're talking about boring a four-inch hole, which, you know, from a vacuum standpoint, with water pressure, could actually create some water flow out. It would create the flow out into their site, right? But the slurry mix that they would put in around the rod would still harden even with groundwater, right?
Yes, well, that stuff, they, they put an additive in it to handle such things, isn't that? What, what you need to understand is although I'm drilling holes this way.
Yep.
I'm digging one 750 feet long to build a foundation.
The water buildup would be in their property.
It'll be up against their foundation and in their footing drains.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would be surprised if they didn't find water in that situation.
Yeah. There's a, I think there's some designs to handle that.
Yeah. Krista?
Looking again at the agreement here regarding the developer, I'm looking at clause four, the developer may leave the soil nails in place. And you said that they don't serve any purpose. Why was it decided not to have them remove them upon completion of the project?
There's really no reason to remove them?
What would be the process for removing them?
To be honest with you, I can't tell. I've never seen them removed before.
Okay.
Okay, you refer here that if the town needs to.
You'd have to dig straight down the road. If they're under the road, this is the road and the, things are under the road. You dig down here, you find the concrete pipe going across, you cut it and you dig it out. That's how you do it.
So it would be, it would be a complete excavation.
Of West Avenue.
Yeah.
We would be excavating in West Avenue down to a certain depth, whatever it may be, and if they are in the way. That's why we put this clause in.
Yeah.
I can't predict the future, though I can tell you that I don't have any plans right now, nor do I foresee any in the near future to be working out there, but, you know.
No, I caught, obviously, you're thinking of it if we had to.
I'm trying to think of just about everything right now.
I appreciate that. So a more likely scenario might be that a utility company might want to do some work in West Avenue, for whatever reason, in the future. And so perhaps, you know, the responsibility falls then to the utility company, that the town could facilitate the removal of those nails for the benefit of the utility company, right?
We could, or the utility company could do that themselves.
Correct, okay.
You had the 345 KV line come through here, 2008, I believe?
Mm-hmm.
It's down 11, 12, 13 feet.
Mm-hmm.
But I've dealt with EverSource when they were doing it and they absorbed every cost to go through every utility around, under. They understand certain things are going to be in their way. They have to either have to move them or go around them.
Okay.
But you made me think of something and a good opportunity here is to make sure that when they do put these in, that we get an as-built plan from them.
Yes.
That shows the locations of them.
Yeah, we're all pretty sensitive to those.
After having built a cafeteria and planning lines.
And so I would have a record of at least, I know where they are.
Yep.
That's key.
Okay. Any other questions from Ed at this point?
Thank you for answering your question.
Do you have the dollar amount for the insurance, page two?
Yes, I do. And I, I'm sorry, I didn't fill it in before I gave you copies. I got it actually after you, you folks had gotten your copies. It's $1 million per occurrence or 2 million aggregate. And that's, that was a recommendation of our town attorney.
Yep, that's standard. Okay. Any other questions for Ed at this point? We have all acquired new knowledge today. Thank you so much.
I just want to make sure I covered everything, so you have.
I've never heard.
I will.
Performance bond, you were.
Yeah, so if you could maybe follow up on that. to provide feedback about the plan online. We will let Kate report next time she is with us, and we'll move on to new business. And that item is to discuss and approve what we just heard, the Federal Realty's Earth Retention License Agreement. Is there any further discussion on the plan and the license agreement that Ed has presented tonight?
No, may I just, I just want to make a comment when I saw that, that we just rephrase it to take action, as opposed to, it's a little bit semantics, but going forward to phrase it as take action, as opposed to approve in the event we don't approve?
Yep. I would agree. Typically, we say that. I don't know why this is something different.
Yeah, that's what I thought of.
Yep. Okay, so we've modified the item to reflect, discuss, and take action on the Federal Realty's Earth Retention License Agreement. If there's any further discussion or questions, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the license agreement.
So moved.
Kip, seconded by Krista. All those in favor? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Krista, okay. Perfect. All right, we have meeting minutes of December 16.
I found one.
Go ahead.
Okay. Under the first selectmen's report...
Hold on a second.
I'm talking to me, right? I would...
Usually this is...
I'll take notes as well. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Well, we mentioned Mark's passing. I think he was not, he didn't pass that day.
He passed on Monday?
No, that was Sunday.
Okay, okay. Then I stand corrected. Thank you.
Was Mark the former first selectman?
Yeah.
No, former selectman. Any other corrections, additions?
Yes, I don't understand on page two, the transfer of the technology.
Technology.
That amount, I brought the thing we brought from last month. I don't understand the discussion. It's a $40,000, which is not in here, $40,000 transfer, right?
Yes.
Okay, so shouldn't that be in there? It's a $40,000?
Yes.
Transfer. And I'm not sure what paragraph number two in there says. I mean, just, somebody can reword it.
Yeah, I don't understand that second paragraph.
Can make sense of it. I mean, we basically discussed the whole thing, and then we said, fine, let's make the transfer to cover the costs.
Yep.
And the last thing, on the agenda review, the second paragraph, I think Mark was a selectman from 2015 through 2019.
Yes.
Rather than 2017.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Okay. Any other corrections or additions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended. Krista moves. May I have a second? David? Oh, sorry, sir. David seconds?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you. I'll make sure that Kate gets those changes reflected. Okay, there's no public here, so they'll move past public comment. Agenda review.
Do we want to add parking? Have we talked about adding a parking advisory? What is the name of the parking committee? There is one that has not been...
Oh, Fred's email?
Yes, but also, we had one that was kind of operating for a while. Is that correct?
Yeah, an advisory committee.
Right. Should we call that back into, given all of the developments downtown?
We can talk about that, or we can talk about whether that's an initiative that the Board of Selectmen wants to undertake without the need to reconvene the advisory committee. So we can have a discussion about that.
I think it would be important, given all the discussion and concern.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, hearing nothing, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Sarah moves. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Kip seconds. All those in favor? Great. Thank you very much.